Okay, folks. We are back from closed session. And next item with the, Mr. Attorney, would you give us an announcement from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action from closed session this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes or corrections to the agenda before we begin?
I believe so.
All right. Then I would, well, let's see.
No recusal is correct?
No.
I believe so.
I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Call the rule, please.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have our rules of decorum listed. I don't think we need to read them tonight, but it is on our agenda. If you have any questions about that, we're having to have a nice decorum for all our meetings. Presentations and proclamations, none tonight. Public communication, do we have any non-agenda items, Cards?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We'll begin with Rhonda, follow that with Skipper Clark.
Rhonda, welcome.
I had a little bit of a new friend come to see me, I guess. I'm becoming very, very popular because my mouth is a little bit too big, obviously. But Monday the 13th, about 7:00 a.m., I'm on the sidewalk. I've got a tap that I had just taken off my body. And I get a visitor, which would be the Chief of Police, to inform me while in uniform on his way to work that I am to move or be moved. When I say, "Sir, you know I can't get shelter," he says, "I understand. What you're doing is considered camping." Okay? So if that is the case, the definition of camping, people, the activity of spending a vacation, living in a camp, tent, or trailer. Okay? This right here, not a tent. Nope, it's to cover things. Okay, human basic needs. Tyranny, right there. Basic needs are for survival, including air, water, food, shelter, and sleep. Beyond that is clothing, health, safety, and human connection. Okay? These are all critical, 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 critical things. So when I am laying on a street with the pouring down rain and the clothes that I am lacking and the food and water that I am lacking because the places that are supposed to be serving this to me doesn't like me opening my frickin' mouth. So today, when I go to the Hope Center, I've been banned for 30 days now. Oh, yeah. Josh, we know what that's all about, don't we? Well, then today, he says, well, then he says, "Come back on the 19th." I go back on the 21st. Well, they come out and inform me that until I obey, obey, I get no more services. My clothes were already in the wash. Now I got a bag of wet clothing that's going to go in the trash can right after I leave here. So there I am again, lacking one of my basic needs. And you know why I'm lacking one of my basic needs? Because Pastor Allen thinks I should gown size in order to be in his shelter, or I should close my mouth. And this is going on all over the frickin' place. I've tried to speak to every single one of you. I have, on my knees almost, in tears absolutely. You got 105 beds. You got a shelter that has to tell a story if the pouring of water down on your feet that day. What do you?
Rhonda, your time has expired.
With you. You've expired long enough.
Rhonda, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Skipper Clark.
Mr. Clark, welcome.
Bill Spear.
Here's your glasses, too. Rhonda, get your glasses. Concerning the Bree plant, I'm just doing a lot, still doing research here really. This morning, I met with Jim Houtman from Buick County Fire Safety Council, and he definitely wants as many biofuel plants, bigger, more places and stuff, just seeing that from the, from his perspective. And I'm not, I'm not entirely on board yet because there, I still have concerns about pollution stuff. But I, it's funny that it's kind of an evolution here, and I'm seeing where we got, really got to meet in the middle here with a lot of different issues. And so I am just asking that at the town hall meeting that's being proposed, that it could be a little different format. And I would be willing to kind of like be, because I'm generating all this data and information, and there's some really interesting stuff that I'm coming up with. But I'm asking the council now that if that meeting could be a little different format where I'm not, Patrick asked me who would, I've been in contact a couple of times there, who would I, who would be like, is it opposing the plant? And I said, "I don't, I don't know what that'd be," and I'm not exactly, I realize that it isn't like a debate, but somehow that I would be willing to be kind of ask questions of specifically of Bree and what, you know, the proposals are so everybody is clear about what is being, you know, proposed and what the solutions can be and stuff. So I wanted to just say that, you know, it's going to be here, I think, in December, so give time to talk to them and, you know, discuss it among yourselves here, just a little different format than what the last one was.
Mr. Clark, we have, Councilman Johnstone has a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you. Have you, the questions that you have or that you want to ask, have you reached out to Bree specifically to ask them to answer your questions?
Yes, yeah, I'm in contact with. It's complicated. There's a line maybe.
Is it just more for community knowledge, the questions that you're asking, rather than just, okay?
of the greatest number of people anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Up next, we have Bill Spear, followed by Brian Wong.
Welcome, Mr. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council. Verse of the day is in Judges 6:12. The Lord appeared to Gideon. He said, "The Lord is with you, mighty warrior." I read that scripture this morning and thinking about what Gideon went, went through and kind of related to him a little, I was like, I can't even get a building permit or an occupancy permit to get back into my building. But anyways, we know the story and how it ends, and says, "If God be for you, who could be against you?" So we'd like to pray today over our planning and building department, also for Rhonda. Father God, we thank you that we don't go on our own power, that you have a plan and a purpose, that you're able to see it through. And we trust you. We pray for Rhonda, that you would make a way for her, that you would take away the anger.
Amen.
And the hurt, and, Lord, Jesus, you said you are the way and the truth and the life. And, Lord, we thank you for the rescue mission, and we continue to pray that you would continue to use that place to restore and heal and make whole, to make a way to clothe and feed and, and to give hope. Thank you for the Hope Center, and we pray your blessings upon them. And all the, the work that you do through them, that you are providing resources. Thank you for our police department, our police chief, and the job that they're doing, keeping our city safe. Whenever there's an issue or problem, they're the first to show up. And, and our fire department and all the firefighters, again, they rush in when, when everybody's running out. And we just thank you for the resources that, that we have, so many. Pray for our city council member, all, all of their families. We pray for their health and provision.
Amen.
For their children and grandchildren, and, Lord, we just are thankful that, that you are the provider, the healer, that you got a plan and a purpose. Bless all of the churches. Let us rise up to, to meet the needs also, not relying on the rescue mission, but everybody, many hands make light work, and we just pray that you would continue to tear down the walls that the enemy tries to put up to divide us and to separate us, that we would be a city on a hill, a light on a shelf, an example for other communities, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Up next, we have Brian Wong.
Brian, welcome.
City Council and city staff. And tonight, I just want to give a thanks to the city councilor, staff, everybody, for the great job that you guys are doing. We have lots of challenges in the community. We're talking about biomass issues. We're talking about insurance issues. We're talking about high PG&E costs. So sometimes in the midst of all these issues that we have, you know, it's, it's tough to move forward on a day-to-day basis. You know, sometimes I even think to myself, what is the right thing? Because, you know, there's so much that comes. So lately, you know, going through all these challenges, you know, trying to fill up some of these stories downtown and everything else, you know, I just tell myself that, well, at the end of the day, it's about improving the community. So any action that we do, that we use to improve the community, hopefully that'll be the right thing. Now, we're, and even with the biomass projects that we're trying to do, if there's value added for our city, for our community, then it will be a good thing. But however, if we're going to do it at the detriment of the city or our community, then that will be a very bad and moral thing. So I thank you all for all the hard work that you guys do to get our city moving forward each and every day also. And with that, I thank you all.
Thank you. Well said.
Well said. Is that it for Cards?
That's all I have.
All right. Next item is council announcements and reports. Any council wish to use the podium? Councilman Weber.
Yeah, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the Third Friday event that happened on Friday. It was a lot of fun, a lot of work went, put in, put into it, great turnout. Tracy Grant and Joyce Townsend in their efforts to bring forth the Third Friday Show and Stroll, and their spectacular event downtown was super fun. And then, of course, Jordan Crossing had their truck retreat in the old PG&E parking lot, which was like wildly successful this year. It was a lot of fun. And then on the Halloween night, there was the Halloween parade, and it was super fun. So just being downtown, seeing all these people out, it just reminds me of how great our community is, how fun it is to be out together, and how great we are when we work collaboratively for the community, just like Brian Wong was just talking about, you know, for the greater good and putting in that effort. So I just wanted to publicly thank Tracy Grant and Joyce Townsend for their efforts and for everything that happened down there.
Very good. I'm going to take a quick moment myself. I just passed out an idea, document, that our Rainforest folks have come up with. And what they're talking about is the idea of putting these panels up on top of the Orville Dam. Some of you might remember the panels over there before were just rock aggregate, kind of a pinkish color, if I remember right. And if you recall, what happened is that aggregate was brought from every county of the state, made a contribution, they mixed it all up, and then they put the panels on. They're saying that every county contributed to the project. Well, I guess when they were doing the spillway rebuild, somebody tested one of the panels and said, "Uh-oh, it's full of asbestos." So they took them all down. So, so the idea comes about the potential of having these panels all the way across. Now, this is not a small project, but if we go down the path, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, just looking for general ideas if it's a good idea, where we go with it. I've talked to Rotary Club, I've talked to the Housing Authority, and everybody seems to like the idea. It was certainly more decorative, and I had to get Mr. Ramsey set aside because of, when he was Rotary President, his project was to plant golden poppies on the dam. And he had a helicopter seating the whole dam with golden poppies. The next season didn't work too well. In fact, there's very few poppies still left. So I said, "Well, maybe you could have little poppies on these panels and finally accomplish your goal as president of Rotary Club," so.
So do you have an estimate of the cost? And what about the community fundraising?
Well, we're just, right now, it's just an idea.
It's just an idea?
It's an idea. If you like it. They've mocked up one of these panels.
It's gorgeous.
Just for us. And it's kind of a, an after-the-Rainforest project up on the thing, and it could be the same thing. I mean, when you talk about school kids, you're talking to a lot of kids.
Yeah.
To do these panels. And if you kept the same theme, it certainly would be an enjoyable walk across the dam, so.
Good job.
It was presented to me on Friday, and I said, "I'll take it to the council and let them know, and we'll go from there." So we'll, probably if we do move forward, we'll have a meeting on Friday with the state water contractors and the committee and talk about it. And I have a grant writer that's willing to take on the project, so maybe that's a story thing, so.
Yeah, please do. Since our dam, 56 counties.
Invest.
Yeah, I mean, we could go out to all the counties and say, "Ask them for their contribution." That's not a bad idea, so. Anyway, just a new idea. That's what we do in local government, so.
So did you want to?
Just, all I need is a positive yes, and I'll keep going, and then it'll come back formally when we have to do something about it. So I hear yeses by consensus, huh?
Were you thinking of maybe an ad hoc committee?
Not at this point. Let me, let me move forward and.
We're already there.
Well, I know. I have an inquiry, I have an inquiry from state water contractors that might be very helpful in this.
Okay.
So let's be careful where we go.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, or Mr. Vice Mayor?
I will be participating in that meeting, and I was going to bring up another ask.
Okay.
So this body's aware of it, and that's to have a Fourth of July, 250th on top of the dam.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, I guess, be in concert there, so just, I guess, more to know.
It, the meeting we're talking about, they normally have them online, but this is actually going to have a virtual one here in town.
This is a, yeah, yeah.
In person?
In person, yeah.
At the south side.
All right. Any other council announcements? Oh, Vice Mayor Smith, are you done?
I'm done. That was it.
Okay. Any others? If not, we'll move to department heads, and I'm going to start with the fire department first, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I want to show appreciation for one of your guys' employees. Amazing employee among a lot of amazing employees in the city of Orville. But this employee is kind of the, the silent helper in the background that doesn't really work for the fire department, but has assisted the fire department for many, many years, saving the city millions of dollars in fire engines and equipment, and not just fire engines, but the equipment that goes on to the fire engines, supporting our firefighters and citizens. So tonight, with your blessing, I would like to present a plaque to Amy Bergstrand, who the city.
Wow.
So I know council knows, and we haven't done a lot of PR on this yet, but the city recently received $3.1 million in funding for a second new fire engine and a ladder truck. And that also includes all the equipment on it, which is very expensive. And Amy has been tremendous.
Yes.
Huge support, and she supports the fire department. I don't even know if she knows that she does. So I'm going to read this to Amy. Presented to Amy Bergstrand, Business Assistance and Housing Development Director, City of Orville, "With deep appreciation for your dedication and hard work in securing over 3.1 million in grant funding for new fire engine and ladder truck essential resources that will help protect life, property, and support the firefighters who serve our community. This most recent success reflects your ongoing commitment to public safety, having written and secured multiple grants over the years to strengthen the Orville Fire Department." So thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Good job.
My department report, I was going to report about the grant that we got official award, but also I was wondering why Matt was here tonight, so. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, very nice.
Well deserved.
While, while you're up, go ahead and give your department report.
We received official award letter for the 2024 CDBG grant in $3.6 million that will purchase the fire truck, the fire engine, and additional fire equipment, as well as fund the drainage study for South Orville and also catalyst domestic violence. You may know already that we received the 2025 NOFA, and at the next meeting, we'll be having a public hearing to talk about the changes for that.
Excellent.
All right. Bravo.
Well, the rest of the departments, sorry, there's no more plaques. Who wants to go next? Patrick, I see a smile over there. Go ahead.
Still smiling from Amy's award. I don't have anything to report this week.
All right. Chief?
Yeah, a few things. Just some updates on some hiring and recruitment. While we are full in the officer ranks, I did have one lieutenant position open that I'm not going to be filling right now, so I'm going to be freezing that one and opening up to hire a detective, and so we can bolster up on the street level stuff. We had two positions become vacant. We held over 100, well, we had 150 applicants for those.
Oh, you're kidding.
And now we're already able to fill those two.
Wow.
Holy, yeah.
Good job.
Wow.
We had our annual coffee with the cop, and so that was held at Starbucks this year. And we actually had one of our officers, who was a former barista, jump behind the counter and start serving drinks.
No.
I didn't realize he had that talent, but he did a great job back there. Our Community Connect platform, that is the online, and it's going to be the automated feedback to callers, let them know what their services, after all the technical aspects we got it figured out, that's going to go online in January. So quite a bit of a delay, but we do have it figured out, and we'll go live. And that should be a great help, not only to the PD, but also to the community. We toured Yuba City Evidence Facility, so we can take a look at what they have built, and it allowed us to refine our vision as to what we need for ours, and we're moving forward with doing some internal design plans so that we can move forward with that new evidence facility that is greatly needed. Summertime's wrapping up. We were able to get some foot patrols downtown, not as many as we'd like, but we were able to get some downtown, a lot more presence. Spent a lot of time at the farmer's market, but there's a lot of opportunities and reasons to be down there. So now we're just going to get, start transitioning into the cold weather and see what that looks like for us. As you've noticed, there's a lot more people wandering the streets, and so we're going to have to figure out how to stay on top of that while respecting humanity as well. Stats for the month, continuing to be busy, over 3,500 calls for service with another 300 initiated by the officers. So we're still running right around 4,000 calls a month. So continuing to be busy.
Yeah. All right. Alyssa, I'm going to ask you next, but you have an excellent report here in hand, so I don't know what more you can add to it, but it's a nice, very, very well put together. Thank you.
Great. Yep, no, I have to, I have my staff to thank for that. They each contribute to their own respective sections. I can just kind of hit high level. The contracts that you've been seeing the last couple of council meetings for the airport, the crack seal project, the remarks, those contracts have now been executed, so we should see those projects moving forward. We have been working with CAL FIRE staff on getting some aerial imagery out there. I don't think it's happened yet, but we are working toward that, just so we can have some good before and after photos of the work taking place. As far as the engineering division, still continuing to work on our potential public safety number two building out at Challenger. Hewitt Park is coming along fantastically. There will be another community day, like an open house, on November 4th. I don't have a time on here, but I can get that for you if needed. And hopefully you can see from the photos, and if you've had a chance to get out there, I would highly recommend you get eyes on it. It's just, it's really something to behold when you're out there and can kind of start to see everything coming together. Working through some design changes for the corp yard, so we, you know, took what you said at the last council meeting and are doing the best we can to just kind of downsize the scope of work. Fed Rock Park will now move forward, so we'll be starting on the design for Phase One with the authority that was provided last meeting. Montgomery Roundabout, you'll be seeing two agenda items today, one for construction management and one for the construction contract later on in the agenda, so I won't belabor that one very much. I will just say, though, that particular project, the contractor will have 45 days, and we are trying to finish it before the end of the year. So we'll see if weather cooperates. That would be the only reason it would delay. We have to, whenever there's paving work, there are certain temperature requirements that we want to meet, and so we want to try to do as much of that work at night, and that was already conveyed to the construction company. However, if paving takes place, it may, there may be a day where we need to work in the daytime, and I know that will be a challenge for the public because it's such a, a popular location, well-traveled. So, but we will try to keep the public informed as that comes.
Thank you.
As Amy mentioned, our South Orville Drainage Improvements Project is well underway. Right now, we are working through right-of-way and what it's going to take to potentially do some either easements or some right-of-way acquisition. It's a little bit complex, and we knew it would be, for those parcels off of Elgin and Fort Wayne. So continuing to work through that.
Right.
And then also the drainage off of Greenville. I have asked the consultant to focus on that specific drainage because we know that there's already drainage problems at that location.
Good job.
Norton Street will not see a full rehabilitation probably before this winter, but we are looking at doing like a rolled curb down the whole stretch so that it should help with drainage challenges that we experienced, that we've been continuing to experience these last couple of years. So while the full street, while we still try to work through the details of just some of the conflicts that we're encountering out there, there's a number of utilities, PG&E poles, water valve boxes, and then Norton is just really narrow already, and people park on the street. And we're trying to figure out a way to allow them to do that without taking too much of the city's right-of-way. Yes. So the, the challenge has been that there's been encroachment into the public right-of-way, and it's, it's posing a challenge for us. Let's see here, just something to note with the State Route 162 project, really just trying to wrap up that project, but in doing so, I wanted to make sure that you were all just aware of, of a challenge that I've encountered with closing that out. I don't know that, so when it comes to active transportation grants, generally, there's before and after. before and after counts that are required, as far as pedestrians and bikes, because the goal of the project is to try to minimize vehicular traffic and increase bikes and Peds. And so they like to see before and after counts, and I'm having a hard time right now finding whether or not before counts were done for the State Route 162 project. So I've been, I just want you to know that I am coordinating that right now with the state, to see what alternatives we might be able to provide. I know that we've invested in Streetlight, which is more of like a modeling program, but it does provide us with some counts, so I'm going to see if they'll accept that.
Good.
And then we'll go from there.
All right.
Just wanted to keep you informed of that little hiccup.
Thank you.
For streets and storm drains, I don't know if you've seen it, but they've been really, really busy trying to do a lot of drainage improvements in preparation for the coming winter. Still working through our computerized maintenance management system, and then also our new 3-1-1 system. So I'm, we're finding we actually really do like it. Staff like it. We're trying to get more staff involved. The 3-1-1 system was, the intention was to have that roll straight into our CMMS software program, so that staff didn't have to look in both places. Right now, that integration still has not happened, but we don't want to be ignoring our 3-1-1 service request or duplicating efforts, so right now they are looking at both locations for work. But I do think so far it's been good, positive feedback, as far as even just internal communication. It's not the strange routing of, you know, our front desk staff getting a phone call, routing it to me, then I route it to Wade, and then I follow up. It's so much more efficient to have the 3-1-1 system, so I've just really been very pleased with that. And I can be, I can check on status, because Wade's crew are, they're constantly updating the status of things, so I don't have to bother him about it, I can just read it myself.
Yeah, that's cool.
Let's see here, what else? We are down one street sweeper, so I know that we've been getting a lot of requests for street sweeping, but we are down one, so trying to work through that challenge right now as well. Parks and Trees did a lot of work up at Centennial, planted a lot of new trees there. I don't know if you've seen that, but at Centennial Plaza, there's a lot of new trees. Our museums, Vanessa has been hard at work. She's got a rather lengthy update in that packet. I won't go into tremendous detail. There are a couple of agenda items that have to do with her and a potential assistant for her, so we'll see what you decide on that later today. And working through building maintenance for the Pioneer and the Antique Tool Museum, they both need, they both need some maintenance. I'm trying to think if there's anything else worth mentioning.
Good report.
Yeah, that's probably it. Anything else you guys can kind of look through? Our sewer division's been doing fantastic also, they're just, they're, they did a bunch of night work on State Route 162 just recently, so they're doing good.
Councilman Johnstone has a question.
Thank you, as always, for your detailed reports. I just have a quick question on the Parks and Trees Division. I was down walking between Bedrock and Centennial Park with my little doggy this weekend, and I noticed that the bike path between the two is, needs some maintenance as far as, yes.
Okay.
You can, you can address that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I felt like, you know, some trees need to be, you know, manicured, some sweeping, and just some upkeep done on that.
No, thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Belsor's next, we'll just follow up.
Yeah, just real quick, on the graffiti, it's on the bike trail, we have the paint, and we got the supplies, and that'll be addressed before the end of the week.
Perfect, thank you. You guys are always on it.
Whenever they do the graffiti, they go through and blow off the debris off of the bike trail, and report to Wade any trees that are issue.
How often do they do that?
We're there about every couple weeks, the graffiti, you know, I mean, it's hit and missed, yeah. I mean, it just, and once we start seeing, you know, vulgar stuff and stuff like that, we get on it, but we have a specific paint that goes on there that matches the bike trail.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate both your departments.
Okay, I'm looking over to this side of the room. Anybody else? Ruth, anything to, no? All right, Brian?
Just one quick update, we have the, our representatives from the Ferguson Group will be here next, I believe, Thursday, I believe, so if you, any council members would like the opportunity to meet with them, please let me know, but it's a great opportunity to talk about some goals for, that you want to see accomplished in 2026.
Is it this Thursday or next?
Next Thursday.
This week or next week?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Let me confirm, let me confirm.
Yeah, really. You had me flipping out here, oh, wait a minute, no, I got, okay, thank you. I think it's a requirement, all of us have our own phones to keep our schedules together, because it's a busy time. All right, then we'll move on to the next item. Because, well, actually, I should go back to the timed item, the public hearing that was supposed to happen at 5:15. Let's do it now, if we need to. So it's now 5:20. I'll call the public hearing to order for amendment to the OMC Chapter 5.06, align the bid billing due dates and business license fees, replace new business waiver with proration. Who has that topic?
I do.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The way that our code reads, and the way that we've been carrying out the code for the past, since the bid was implemented, was that the, the bid fees are invoiced in December, they're due at, sorry, they're invoiced in December, but they're not due until July, where the business licenses are billed in December, and they're due at the end of January. So it creates some confusion between some of the folks down in the downtown business area for when they should actually pay, and then we don't have a mechanism for sending out another invoice, so their, one invoice goes out in January, and then it's sent out, sometimes people pay, sometimes people don't, and then it, but it's created a lot of confusion. So the Downtown Business Association, they've gotten together, they took a vote, and they agree that they would like to have it changed, so that the business license fee and the bid fee are due at the same time, so billed in December and due at the end of January. Because everyone in the bid right now who's currently a member, has already paid for this fiscal year, they won't be, they'll be paying for 50%, so we'll bill them for 50% of 2026, since they've already paid for the first half of the year. So they'll be paying then for the second half of the year. Following that, they'll be paying the full amount every year, along with their business license by the end of January. And then the other little change in here is that the new businesses, they pay a, they pay, they don't pay the first year. So what the Downtown Business Association is asking is that they also do pay their bid fee in their inaugural year, but it get prorated based on how many months are left in that year.
Okay. Just with the public bid, is actually Business Improvement District?
Thank you.
Just for a definition.
Thank you, yes.
All right, this is the public hearing. Any questions from council? Vice Mayor Smith?
I just want to comment that I support this endeavor. I think it does soak up valuable staff time to handle a lot of that confusion, so I think that's a great way to bring and align the stars. And then just to point out, this is a fee increase to new business, but I think it's fair and prudent, and I support both of these items moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilman comments? Do we have any public cards on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the actions requested.
Was that a motion?
We need to close the public hearing.
Oh. We now close the public hearing at 5:24, I'll call it. And so now I'll ask the council for, entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Next item's consent calendar, as presented and agendosized. Any questions, or anyone wishing to pull an item from consent?
I would like to pull an item.
Go ahead.
Number two.
Number two. Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one more as well. I just realized we had one recusal on number four, I believe, correct?
Number four. So we're pulling items number four and number two. Any other, is, do I hear a motion to move the rest of the consent calendar forward?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please. And we'll now go back to item number two, Agreement with Our Energy. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just, I'm looking for some clarity, and then also I just want to do a little historical walk on this item. I think, you know, certainly the goal here is improving energy, the whole concept, I think, is well-supported in the idea of energy resilience and the microgrid concept, which I think Pat had brought to us a little over a year ago. And so just reflecting back on that original presentation with Our Energy LLC, part of that presentation included the fact that $25,000 would be reimbursed by PG&E regardless of whether or not we are awarded the project. And so I'm not, I'm not, so moving forward and looking at this new ask here, it looks a little bit more ambiguous as to whether, so I'm kind of wondering what happened to that money? Did we get a reimbursement? There's, it's not addressed directly in the new ask. And then also, just the shift in focus. Originally, as it was presented, we thought about maybe the convention center or the safety center, which is of course where the police department and fire is housed. The idea is in the, and hopefully we never experienced it, but invent where we had a massive loss of power that was sustained over time, that the city could continue to function at some level. Additionally, Southside was also heavily focused on the potential for this project, and so now, now it shifted over to the airport, and I'm not materially opposed to that, it's just that there's, there's information that's not, the scope and concept of how we moved from a heavily downtown focus and/or Southside focus, and now it's over to the airport. Kind of just interested in unpacking that a bit, and then also, now we're also asking for an additional $25,000, so we're now doubling potentially or more the amount of money that we invested, and are we any closer to actually receiving this particular, this particular grant that would put a microgrid here in Orville, which would be amazing? I would love to have that, because certainly, you know, if we had an emergency and there were multiple days where we lost power, that could certainly be an area that the city could operate out of, emergency services, all of that, it's a wonderful idea, but I'm a little concerned that we're throwing additional dollars that aren't going to be reimbursed, and then did we get reimbursed? So I think I've probably pretty much made my pitch, so take it away.
I think Pat and I will tag-team this one. I'll start. Just, so just to clarify, we're not asking for an additional $25,000. So the, the original contract, I believe, was $70,000, and it expired in June. So this, we can't, we can't do an extension of a contract. This is, we have to draft a new one. So essentially, the $25,000 was never spent on the original one, because it's this new scope, so we just need the $25,000 basically from the previous contract, and it's going to be used in this one.
Let me clear that up.
Okay, go ahead, and then so Pat's going to clarify.
Sorry, this was, I can see how this is muddy. So the original contract, as you suggested, was for a microgrid application, and we did, we were awarded the $25,000 back, but most of that $25,000 went towards the, Our Energy for writing the grant. We weren't successful, and I had reported that out to council at some point when we, when we learned that we weren't successful. So, and you are right that those microgrids, this is a CPUC-funded grant that's administered by PG&E, and it, and it does island certain areas, that they, there's some criteria about how and why and what has to be in there. So the first thing that we did was the Public Safety Center. So they, the second part of that was at the budget, the time of the budget, I asked for, I asked for an increase in the amount of money that I have for, for Our Energy to help me with the other microgrid aspirations that we have. There was that talk about Southside, I don't think I reported that out to the, to the council, but we'd been working off of a number from a previous engineer that ended up falling far short, that the number was more than double the amount that, of the cost of that, so it's, and the Southside thing, that aspiration is not gone, it's just shifted, so.
I think it's in your staff report.
I'm sorry, and let me take that back. You're right. We did have, we asked Our Energy to do a cost estimate for it, so that's how we found out what the real cost was. So we'd operated on one, one cost, it wasn't the right one, we asked Our Energy to do an actual cost for it, and with that, I asked for additional money to help throughout the year with, with the other microgrid aspirations that we have. So the current one right now that we're looking at, so what we're looking at is that that original, that original contract is still operating with the funds that were put into, say, the microgrid part, this ongoing microgrid discussion that we're having, as, as one task. But this is now another task, so this is another microgrid application, it's tranche two, that's being launched for, for one more tranche, and we're looking at doing something out at the airport, as Alyssa just said. So, so this is where, this is where this one's coming back. So this is requesting an extension of the money for, and for this additional task order. So the, the task order that was open for the original, for the microgrid, for the, for the broader microgrid, for the community, is running on the same task, but this is a new task.
Okay, I, yeah, I'm just, again, because, you know, we're starting to try to tighten up, and kind of watching how we're spending dollars, and then obviously, the goal here is to have success.
Right.
And so you've helped clarify that, so that money was recouped through the contract, the original contract, but most of that went, as you stated, to Our Energy, which makes sense, because that was, that was clearly stated.
And we got to keep some of that.
Just trying to understand that this next, kind of, so we didn't, we weren't successful here, so now we're going to try this in another locate, identify in a different location with this, with this new, kind of like new ask and grant, and then hopefully we can be successful out at the airport, as opposed to the other areas that were applied for.
That's right.
Okay. So now the, so the new, the additional $25,000, is there any potential for reimbursement with that as well?
Yeah.
Because the language is a little bit weaker this time, as opposed to, you're going to get your money, and it seemed a little bit less assured, and so I was just kind of, just raised the flag in my head.
Our Energy did a good job the last time getting us a completed application, and the reason that it wasn't approved was, there was, there was two metrics that were sort of missing, but it was deemed a completed application, so they had, they had done everything that they could do for it, for that. And so it looks like the, it's the same situation here. So if the application isn't, if the award isn't granted, the application will still be paid for, as long as it's a completed application, and they've assured me they'll give the same effort that they gave before.
Okay, and then because we have future plans for a safety center out at that part of town, then that makes a lot of, I mean, I can see how the parts could fit and come together, so let's hope we're more successful. Thank you. Thank you for that. I know it was a long-winded explanation, but I've kind of made a commitment to myself that when I don't, there's, I have questions or clarity on an item, especially when we're spending, you know, some dollars here, I just, I thought, you know, I'm going to start asking something special for greater clarity.
There's a lot to unpack, so yeah, it was a fair question.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Councilman Goodson's in the queue.
I'm glad you brought that up. So I know for many years, we had talked about a microgrid in PG&E, and specifically Southside, along that main corridor, wind dot, so how did it transition? Can you clarify for me? Did that project transition? Because monies had expired, and now you were looking at another locale.
That is actually, that's a separate thing. That, on Myers, it was an undergrounding project, so that's the Rule 28 funds that are still, that's, that still is in the works, but there's moving parts in that also that have not fallen into place quite yet.
All right, and so I'd like an update on that soon, when we have our, yes, thank you, appreciate that.
I can provide a really brief one. I can provide a really brief one. I mean, we just had a, we had a recent discussion on Rule 20A with PG&E. And it's, it's a little bit dependent on their timeline, which they currently have in the early 2030s.
Wow.
What they did is they, when they reallocated the credits, this is good for the public to hear, they, they did a credit reallocation, and we requested additional credits, because we had an active project. They were, they awarded us, I believe, somewhere around 1.8 million, which was great news. So, we had a follow-up call with them last week, just to get an update on the project. And as, as Alyssa mentioned, they have a number now of active projects, and then, and they're in their queue right now. And they told us 2029, 2030 was kind of the range, but we're, we're, you know, I think we got, just got to keep monitoring that, and hopefully, maybe we can get that escalated up a little bit. But, we wanted to make sure if there are tasks that we needed to do, our engineering staff, that we were on board and we were in sync in our timing. So, we'll keep the council appraising that if it changes.
And so, and thank you so much for bringing that to my attention. Just another point of clarification. The original, Our Energy contract focused on South Side. How did it transition now that we're on the same, talking about the same project?
The original contract was actually, was for, when they first came here, they approached us with this opportunity for the microgrid tranche one from the PG&E grant. And so, that was the original, the original grant. We, and I've spoken with many of you a few times about, in the past, about this goal that I had to redo all the infrastructure in South Side and pay for it through the, through the difference in what we would pay for energy and what we could sell the energy to, the neighbors or the community. So, the original, and the original number that we were working with was $40 million. And so, we just thought, okay, before we go down this path any further, we should test that out and see what it really is. So, that's why we asked Our Energy to do an analysis for that. So, now, they did the analysis on the entire project. So, streets, sidewalks, storm drains, curb gutter sidewalks, that didn't include any design. It just, it was just an estimate, just to get us an estimate, so we could know what that might cost. And actually, it was, Yvonne from B.CAG suggested that we go and hunt that estimate down, just so that we have a number to work with. And that number came back.
I recall that, 80 million?
Eighty million dollars for just the infrastructure, plus an additional $28 million for the electrification. So, $108 million total, which was more than 40.
Right.
So, so that project was, can't say it was scrapped, because we still do have ideas for that that we're working on. And, but, it's, it's a big cost, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know that was a heavy lift. Thank you, but I needed that clarification.
Of course, yeah.
We have so many projects, you know, that we've talked about in an offer. Thank you.
With that discussion on item two, Vice Mayor Smith, are you willing to make a motion on that?
I'm sorry.
Item number two, you pulled it, so you want to make a motion to approve?
I move that we approve item number two.
I second.
Call the roll, please.
We're, we're batting a hundred.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, item number.
Thanks for bringing that one up.
Four.
Yes, I know we have at least one recusal, maybe two.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
I need to recuse, because I live in that area.
Certainly, gotcha.
Okay, Mr. Eschmaranza? Wait, this is Mission Eschmaranza contract.
Item number four.
I'm like, wait a minute.
You don't live over there. Do you live in my district?
That's okay.
All right.
Gotcha, well taken.
Question, number three.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Which, what are we going to do first?
Let's do this, let's do number four.
All right, let's do number four, and we'll go back to three. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, oh, Vice Mayor Smith.
Just clarification on that, if she does, because she's more than 500 feet from that building.
Yeah, I think she is more than 500 feet.
I am definitely more than 500 feet.
Yeah, you're quite a ways.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that, it's just in her district as also.
Oh, yes, you are.
Yeah. I, I don't think she has any problem.
You're like.
Yeah, she's 2,000 feet.
Ten blocks away.
I'm, I'm way, I'm on the other side.
No. No.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, right, that's fair.
I'm definitely more than 500 feet.
All right, number.
You're all satisfied?
Yep.
More than. No personal gain.
Item number four, amendment number three to the contract of Buick Construction Company for Mission Eschmaranza project. What we got?
So, this is a amendment to the agreement. There is a number of change orders that were needed to be done on this project that have taken place over the past, oh, number of months. And ultimately, so the, the not-to-exceed went from 3.056 million to about 3.396 million. They had the resources, they had the funding to, in their budget to do this, they're moving some money around. But, there's, so there's no additional funds that are being requested. It's just a contract amendment to reflect the change orders that were done.
All right, so there's no.
Any questions from council?
No fiscal impact.
I need to recuse myself, I have a family member that works for the construction company.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. That being said, any other questions for council?
Oh, okay, there is no fiscal impact.
We have no public cards on this?
We do not.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve resolution number 9412.
A second.
Call the roll.
Motion passes with five yeses and two recusals.
All right, thank you. So, regular business. Item number seven is up in the agenda. And item number seven is.
I believe that's mine.
Yep.
Is that the museum position, job description?
Yep. Assistant job description for new museum assistant.
Yes. So, right now, the city museums are currently staffed by, and managed by Vanessa of Cantu. She's been doing a phenomenal job and really has good vision for where she wants to see these museums go. But, the, there's just been some challenges with a lack of volunteers. And then, even with the, within the volunteers, there can be challenges with, with staffing and event planning. And it's been consuming quite a bit of her time. And so, she's really wanting to do more of what she was hired for, which is being a curator, and not so much a volunteer manager. And so, what we are proposing to do is take a seasonal 0.7 full-time employee position that was in the Parks and Trees Department or Division, and reallocate that time to being a, to a, a new, a new, what would be a new position, new seasonal museum assistant position. Same pay, same pay range. But, it would, right now, Wade doesn't use that position. It hasn't been filled in a number of years.
Years.
And so, I know we are looking to save costs. However, I know that we've, we've also had a little bit of staff turnover when it comes to the museum curator position. And I think having a position like this might help with some sustainability in that role and, and provide some much-needed help to Vanessa, so. The, the ask is if we could, can do this.
Okay.
And if there's council support.
Councilman Johnstrom, please.
Thank you, so this is already a position that is budgeted, right? So, it's not asking any additional funding for it, it's just asking to transfer it from one department.
Yeah, the park position's budgeted, so we would create this position and refund this position and not fund the other one.
Okay.
And to approve the job description itself. So, this is a new job description, so.
Okay, and the, the current position, you said it's been a number of years since that position has been filled, so it's not likely to have been, been filled in the near future, correct?
Yes, and in my discussions with, with Wade, our manager of Parks and Trees, he is not planning, when was not planning, to fill that position.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? And we have no cards on this item? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Number eight is approval of the updated master salary schedule.
This one is also mine, it's related. So, there's two different options, and this was a little bit dependent on what you decided for the, the previous agenda item. So, the first option or the attachment would be for approving a new salary schedule that includes now both the city engineer position. I know that that's already been approved. It's not in addition to a city engineer slash assistant director of public works. But, we have, because we're looking to fill a city engineer role, it's not currently on our master salary schedule. It would be the exact same range as the assistant director position would be. And then, it, I believe, so there were two options. One was just to make that change, and then, the other was to include the new salary range for the assistant or the seasonal museum assistant position. So, I believe you're going, yeah.
This is cleanup, we, we did the city engineer position at the last council meeting, so now, we're adding it to the salary schedule. Pers is very particular about making sure all the jobs that you fill are on the salary schedule. So, this would do that, and also, with the adoption of the new part-time museum assistant, it would include that as well.
Okay.
Any questions from council?
So, you'll, it'll be attachment A is, is the one that we, would include both changes, both job descriptions or jobs, job titles.
Councilman Reynolds on the queue.
Thank you. So, I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't here at this council meeting, but you're approving a standalone position for an engineer. Does that mean that there's also a position created for an assistant public works director?
There is a position for that, but it's not going to be filled. The city engineer position will be allocated. The assistant public works director slash city engineer, it still remains in the city's job descriptions, but it's not allocated, so it cannot be filled.
Okay, but as far as the job description goes, for an assistant public works director, what would be the qualifications for that? Is there an engineering degree? Is there anything that was required before?
I can add some clarification on that. Right now, it would have, that would have to be its own new position, which we do not currently have, if it was separate from the city engineer position.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
Call the roll, please.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Next item, number nine, approval of contract with Duke Sherwood Contracting for construction of the Montgomery Roundabout Improvement Project.
Also mine. So, the project was advertised for competitive public bidding. Bids were received and publicly opened on Thursday of last week, October 16th, in the council chambers at City Hall. Our engineers' estimate for the project was somewhere between $450,000 to $550,000. Six bids were received, and Duke Contracting, Duke Sherwood Contracting came in the lowest, a low bid at $544,590. So, the work generally consists of, we're going to be grinding, we're taking off the layer, top layer of asphalt in the roundabout and putting new pavement back, new striping, new electrical for flashing beacons at the crosswalks, and a couple of new streetlight foundations, because they've been hit. There's been, there's two locations where the foundations need to be redone.
Okay, any questions from council?
So, when I hear you say the word redone, what is the, obviously, I'm assuming what's going to be replaced is something that is, where we, we don't have to go this way ever again, right?
Well, it depends on traffic, so, yeah.
Okay, so there's no guarantee.
No guarantee.
Thank you.
Well, at the rate our light poles are being hit, it's almost hard to keep up.
Oh.
No, I do, light poles are old.
So, I will, I do want to mention, budget-wise, so overall, $650,000 was budgeted for this project specifically. This, this is a big chunk of that 580, or of that $650,000. And so, you'll, the next agenda item is for construction management. And it's going to push us over the $650,000 mark. Now, I've been working with the construction management company. They have provided me with some ways that we can possibly save dollars. We have a new kind of construction inspector position in-house that might be able to alleviate some contracted inspection work. So, we're, we're currently still trying to save dollars, but I did want to make sure that you were aware that we are already going to potentially be over that 650 number by about just over $10,000, and that is with no contingencies.
Got it, okay. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion for item number nine.
I move that we approve the agreement, 3572, the agreement with Duke Sherwood Contracting.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Just on a moment of curiosity, the, I know we already, this is just curiosity on this. When they do this roundabout, which is, my guess is going to block all the traffic going across?
Yes, I mean, it's, they'll, they provide, the contractor will provide us with a traffic control plan, but knowing the kind of work that's going to be required, there will likely be road closures. We're hoping most of that happens at night. So, we.
All the road closures mostly happen, so the daytime, so it's not, we're talking about, because I see 45 days.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, is this whole thing going to be shut down?
It's not like there's a lot of night.
So, will it be accessible during the day?
That's the goal, yes. Yes, yes, so between, I think I posted the, between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. The only, the only exception to that, as I mentioned earlier, is during the paving day, which might require warmer temperatures. And so, at night, it just might be not quite feasible if we want our pavement to come out with, with quality work.
Can you give us a visual of what that detour looks like during the day?
Once I have it, I will, I can provide that to you, but the contractor will need to provide that to us first.
It's got to be all the way, yeah.
I believe, yeah, it looks like it will be a full closure, but hopefully, it won't impact very many, very many folks.
I'm glad you're waterwaying across the river.
Yeah.
Okay, so, votes done?
Yep, and they passed unanimously.
And this, this one really quick, this was one where I think we were all, we were a little worried about. It was nice to see it come in actually near our engineers' estimate, so that was a refreshing surprise.
Yeah. Item number 10, as Alyssa mentioned, approval of the contract with the, for the construction management services for the Montgomery Roundabout Improvement Project. Any questions from council? Any cards on this item?
None received.
I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve agreement number 3571.
Second.
Call the roll.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11, Orville Municipal Code, considerations regarding the driveway culvert maintenance responsibilities.
Okay, let me, let's me, yep, that's me again. I, I've been busy. And I wanted to, I wanted to prepare for this a little bit more the last two days, but I've been tied up in other civic duties with jury duty. All right, let me get to, I really want to kind of, I don't want to read this verbatim, but I just, I guess, so, in general, while I'm trying to, to locate this, I just want to say that it's, it's come up a number of times now, some confusion about the responsibility of the maintenance of driveway culverts specifically. Right now, our code doesn't have any sort of reference to driveway culverts. It really distinguishes maintenance via property ownership. So, if it's in the public right-of-way, it's city's responsibility to maintain. If it's on private property, it's the private property owner's responsibility to maintain, unless there is an easement that's been agreed to by the city and that we've said we will take that on, on private property. So, this is kind of counter to what a lot of other cities, and what I'm. So, this is kind of counter to what a lot of other cities, and what I'm finding is more common, the commonality and kind of the status quo is driveway culverts are the responsibility of the property owner. The only reason that the culvert is there is to service the property. Otherwise, you know, if there, let's say there's a problem with a culvert, and it's causing, there's a blockage in it, and it's causing problems with flooding, you know, someone from the city, one of our staff could go in and pull that culvert out, and flow would resume, and we've done our job. And it's not necessarily our job to put that culvert and replace it, or make sure that it's functioning for that specific property owner. It almost seems like it could be a gift of public funds. That said, our municipal code isn't necessarily very clear on it, and so I just wanted to bring it to you to let staff know, what is the intent? Is the intent to follow what the, kind of what the code implies, where it's, no, it is expected that city staff, we are going to maintain culverts to make sure that we don't have flooding problems, because it's expensive. We know that it's going to be expensive, no matter which, whether the city is going to take responsibility for that, or whether the property owner does. There's an expense that goes with that. So, there's, there's three different ways we could kind of look at this. There's probably more than that, but just off the top of my head, you know, right now, we could say, that responsibility falls on the property owner, done deal. We could also, so that would be option one. Option two is prop, that, that culvert, it falls on the property owner, but maybe the city has some involvement with that. You know, we're doing, we do inspections, and we work with code enforcement to maybe make sure that the proper notifications go out for when those culverts need to be maintained or replaced, and we're, we're having a little bit more of an active role. Or maybe we try to work with AMI, and, you know, for owner-occupied rehab loans, something like this might apply, where we provide some sort of a program that, yes, it's on, it's the responsibility of the property owner. However, we have a program in place to help with the funding for that, whether it's a loan, or a grant, or however we want to maybe proceed with something like that, as far as having property owners that would qualify. And then, the option three would be that the city owns, owns it, and inspects it, and maintains it, and, anyway.
Great talk, guys.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith has got a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add some context and perspective, I've developed property in rural areas, and the road is private. If you develop that road per county or city standards, then the county or city, I would assume the city, I know in the county, because that's where I've done all my work personally, will take, take that on, you grant over, because it's been built to a municipality standard or government standard. So, in light of that, thinking of this particular issue, if it's a public right-of-way, and I got a valid encroachment permit, and I built that culvert system per the standards that was set by the city, then I would feel that it would be kind of the same, then at that point, the city's taken on that responsibility. If I had never pulled a encroachment permit, or it's just a ad hoc system, then clearly that would, I think, reside on the property owner. You know, when I thought about this issue, kind of just processing it, I'm kind of on the fence a little bit with it. You know, there, I think there's, because you could kind of go either, either way. As a personal, as a person who's owned property in more of a rural area, I always had the thought that I was responsible for my culvert, even though I got an encroachment permit. That was just my personal perspective. I wouldn't assume or figure that the county where my developments were, would be responsible for that. I would take care of it. And so, part of this too, would be helpful to understand how many culvert, what are we actually looking at? What parts of town are these culverts, you know, larger, heavy-duty type of systems? Or are you just talking about a tin horn under two inches of asphalt? I mean, you know, so-
It depends on the property.
Just kind of depends, right? But, so I'm just adding some context and my own personal experience to, to the conversation, so.
Yes, and some culverts are, they service multiple driveways. So, it adds a little bit of complexity to that too, when it becomes the responsibility of the property owners, because now the expectation is they work with their neighbors.
Councilman Thompson's in the queue.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the key aspect that I'm hearing is that these driveways, these culverts, they specifically serve the homeowner. And so, I think on that basis, the standards that are kind of universal, I think that's a standard that makes sense for us, city, and I do like your idea of, you know, not that we would just, you know, because if a culvert, if one of these culverts collapses, for whatever reason, goes bad, wasn't installed properly, or whatever, I mean, if that goes bad, and then we have a problem with the flow, then that affects other citizens, and so having somewhat of a, I wouldn't say partnership, but having that aspect of the city, making sure they're, they're looked at, and they're brought aware. And then I even, I do like the idea that you had about potentially having those rehab loans available for people who need some help, because these, we definitely need the water to flow. But, I think the key component here of what was said, which I think is kind of the crux of this, is that these driveways specifically serve the homeowner. You know, if the house wasn't there, we could just remove the culvert altogether, and the water would just flow by.
Yes.
So, on that, my, my personal position on this would be that it'd be the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm looking for is just some direction from you to maybe bring back some potential municipal code language modifications, so that we can have a public hearing related to that. But, it will be, the language will be such that it makes it a little clearer that driveways are kind of an exception. Driveways are going to be the responsibility of the property owner.
Yeah, I-
Okay.
Councilman Goodson, go ahead.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Belzer on that.
Mr. Belzer.
So, I've done some research on this, and it's just, our ordinance does need to be, the language needs to be, not changed, I mean, we're responsible for the flow of water. Alyssa's 100% right. And, what we need is the definition of private driveway or driveways in our ordinance, and who's actually responsible for maintaining those. In the county, it's the property owner. There are ordinances all across California that talk about private driveways and driveways and responsibility being on the property owner.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would tend to agree, because if, if we, as a city, take over the possession of the culvert, and the culvert fails, then you're probably looking at a roadway repair too. So, then you've got a roadway issue on private property, which goes down the path of gift of public fund. So, I think it's very, to clear it up, the fact that, you know, private property, it's your culvert, it's your job. I think it's a very good way to clear it up, and I'm, and I'm sure that this wasn't thought about when they wrote the code, and now it is, and it should be addressed. So, I appreciate you bringing it forward to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? You have enough direction on this?
So, it seems like this is confirm the direction, is to try to find the language in there that establishes a private driveway would be the property owner's responsibility. Okay. And also, would you like, would the council like to see staff work on whether it's revolving loan fund or owner-occupied options that could potentially be available for those that, that needed those resources?
Oh, yeah, I think that's a good idea, certainly. There may be some in the future that have problems that we've not identified, yeah. Okay. Item number 12, is a city park designation for discussion.
Yeah, I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor. We'll give Alyssa a break. This one was put on the agenda. We had a little discussion at this at the last meeting, but ultimately, there's been a, I think, a lot of chatter about the, the status and the condition of the Feather River Corridor, I call it, or they're basically from, call it either the Fish Hatcher, or the Green Bridge, all the way down to the Highway 70 Bridge, and where there's numerous cleanups that are done on a regular basis. I think code enforcement goes out there, I believe, once a month. I've talked to both Chief Wines and Mr. Belzer about the amount of hours that law enforcement and the code enforcement's been out there, and it's 300, 400 hours a month, and it's an extensive, it's a lot of responsibility right now. And that's frankly, probably just being reactive, and I know they both would like to be out there more, but frankly, the resources are, we all know the resources are thin. With that, we, we did have a meeting, I think it was a week and a half ago, and with, with a lot of our partner agencies, Feather River Parks and Rec Department, Department of Water Resources, CHP, State Parks, I don't think they actually made that one, but just talking about the idea about what would it, what were, what are their thoughts if we were to designate this a state park, or city park, I'm sorry, not state park? And I should, I should explain, in some of the research, there is a, state land commission owns from the high, high water level down, and this is one of those issues that would need to be looked into, because from the high water level down, it's state land, and then we also have slivers on this corridor that are privately owned, that would also need to be looked into. So, there's some challenges. I think ultimately, if this was the council's direction and desire to look into this, we'd probably want to have some public meetings and get some public input on this, obviously talk to the property owners, work on that issue, that area that the state land commission owns. And also, I think there might be some other areas out there, we can maybe glean some information from that may have considered this option as well. But, the, the idea or the goal here, I think, is to try to provide a environment that, one is, if we had, if it was a city park, you could have open and closed hours, where you can close it down, you can go through there. Obviously, it's, it's a large area, it wouldn't be gated, but if there's an effort to kind of control the population that is there after night, that's doing the illegal dumpings, it could be helpful in that regard. And also, it could be, if it was a city park, it could be, could open us up for some other grant funding to make some improvements in the area as well. So, those are a couple of ideas that the staff have had in discussions with our, some more partner agencies that, that have come up, and so far, they've, they seem, the other agencies seem receptive to at least going down the path and looking into the idea.
Councilman Weber's in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for the observations on that. Yeah, I, I think it's time that we take some, you know, pretty decisive action to preserve the sensitive ecosystem that is the low-flow channel, and what that represents for not only us as a community, but also the, like I said, the sensitive salmon spawning grounds that are there. If we turn this entire thing into a park, or we at least explore it, then I believe this will give us greater ability, also as you noted, to pursue, pursue some federal grant funding for beautification elements, for reducing non-native species, for better line of sight, and also to upgrade and beautify the River Walk. I've done a little bit of research myself, and there's a lot of grants that are available for that kind of thing. It's like, a lot of the box, the boxes that would need to be checked are checked, with the fact that, you know, it's like, you know, the salmon population, many, many factors there. So, as well as also pursuing solar lighting for the walkway, to make it more accessible for individuals at night.
That's a huge plus.
And the, also, part of that would could be incorporated, like you were talking about, with enhanced patrols, which could potentially help both Mr. Belzer and Mr. Wines with some of their needs, because if we were able to ask the federal government for a larger portion of money for enhanced patrols down there, maybe even qualifying it as like a park patrol, or something like that, or maybe an offshoot, I don't know, maybe an offshoot of the MLE, or something, whatever we could work on, something like that, to enhance the patrol, but that would also help mitigate some of the issues that we're seeing down there with the unhoused population, the amount of, you know, pollution, human waste, and debris that are going directly into these waters that we highlighted the last meeting, you know, and that, that Feather River Parks and Rec River Cleanup that we all participated in, seen the massive amount of, you know, well, a lot of stuff going right into the waters. So, our citizens deserve a safe, clean, and thriving Feather River and Low Flow Channel, so I think that even with the challenge that you just talked about, and these, I think it's probably worth us pursuing this. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to the body of commentary, it's already a pseudo-park. I mean, it's used that way, and as you've already noted, there are a lot of players. If you go back to the settlement agreement, again, this is kind of high-level, but believe that Feather River Parks District is required to manage the trail, and it goes back to when Riverbend Park was put in, and it was monies, of course, through the settlement agreement. So, obviously, they're a key contributor and player, and to, I think, Councilman Weber's point about the sensitive habitat, even though that mile or so of riverfront out here is not inside the FERC boundary, however that happened, we won't litigate that, maybe there is also some wherewithal within DWR, because they have made adjustments at time for funding, and given that, as, and I think we, you talked to Ms., Dr. White here recently, you know, millions of the reds are killed because of pollutants in the water, and so maybe they, they would be willing to throw some dollars toward this as well, in, in protection. For an example, they purchased a big chunk of property across the river here in the last couple of years. They've kind of expanded their operations when they're looking at environmental restoration and management of the river, because the majority of the wild-spawned fish happen right here, in our town. And so, with all of that in consideration, I think that would be a potential conversation, certainly. So, but yeah, I'm 100% in support, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Goodson.
As both of you were talking, and I was remembering a couple of years ago, we were, when Riverbend was being renovated, and we were looking at the amount of blight, and Councilman Thompson had brought up energy-efficient lighting and patrol, patrolling some of the things, same things that you guys are bringing up now, he had brought up a few years ago. So, you know, in the words of a certain person we know, that the word did not return into him void.
Okay. Any other councilman comments? Looking at that, I, I would just-
I have a comment if I could.
Yes, sir. Please, Mr. Belzer.
I, I kind of want to, I mean, this is just my advice, my direction. I want to go away from park and use the term wildlife preserve in that area specifically. If you want, talking about grant opportunities, and getting the state involved, and getting other, other agencies involved. Cities will take areas, make them a wildlife preserve. You can really control what people do within that area, in comparison to what we can control now with camping and, and people loitering. And there's additional crime code sections there, penal code sections, environmental code sections, that work better in preserves than they do parks.
Yeah.
Nice.
Great idea. Councilman Weber's in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Belzer. That was an excellent, excellent suggestion, and immediately, it made me click, like, thinking about, like, because it's not just wildlife, we're talking about in the water and out of the water, right? And then, that would, that would also, that would play well with the environmental, like, if, if we're able to entertain the enhanced no, environmental, no camping that we talked about last meeting as well, that would play right into that as well, right? Because, you know, along with that, there's the, there's the other factor of, you know, okay, of course, we, everyone, everybody up here, and I'm, everybody in this room has incredible, incredible compassion for the unhoused population, but we also want, like I said, we want a clean, debris-free-
Absolutely.
-public place that we could all go and enjoy, right? So, we, you know, we do have compassion, but we also have an obligation, right? You know, and we got to balance that. And that's what, that's what we got to find right now. So, I think that's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Belzer. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Councilman Thompson.
Thanks. I'm not sure if this lands here or with the future agenda items. It kind of means in the same area, so I guess it can possibly land here's. I know we, we mentioned this before, but the potential of, you know, completing the road there from the Veterans Hall, all the way down, with, I think, should be slowed traffic, you know, or some bumps, so that people don't use it as a freeway. But, I think the more we can get eyes and lighting, and so, you know, on that area, I think the more, you know, reporting could be done, more dispersing of people who might be doing something that's nefarious along there. But, I really think it'd be great if we could look into personally making that, paving it, making it complete all the way through, so that people can, you know, law enforcement or citizens can drive that. And if it's lit, then we can use that the same way people use the dam.
Sure.
And walk along it, and enjoy our River Walkway.
I like that.
Are you, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
On that? It's the, are you talking about the section that is currently closed off that's by, blocked by the, the bollards that kind of separates?
Because you can go, you can go pretty far and then it stops, but if we were to start it from the Veterans Hall, you know, and then take it all the way down and then drop it down wherever it naturally drops off. I mean, it's already kind of level, it just needs to be paved with lighting. I know it doesn't, it's probably going to be super expensive.
I think it might need to be widened a little bit also. So, that, that will be rather significant. It is on our capital project list, so it's there, we know about it. It was also discussed during the levy review, so we're looking at how to bolster that, that section of the levy.
Thanks.
In addition to the levy review, the Bureau of Engineers report, one of the things requested was to produce a vegetation management plan for the entire levy, which would tie into the fact of wildlife, you know, preserve. What, what they recommendation is to preserve the levy from failure. And what I was more concerned about is when we have a high flow, those trees, especially the digger pines, when they get wet, that's a high tendency for them to fail just because the high flow will saturate the levied where it's not normally there. So, some of those trees have really gone ballistic in terms of, you know, removing or creating a potential hazard to the levy. So, hopefully, when we get the draft back from Army Corps of Engineers, they'll have that vegetation management plan so we can also tie that into this potential wildlife preserve. It all kind of works in a nice thing and I definitely want to see a wide roadway all the way through.
Yeah.
All right.
That would be nice.
Very good, good discussion, folks. Appreciate the ideas. Next item is, I guess, public communication, area of non-agenda items.
None received.
I actually remiss in one thing, I wanted to mention that we had a tour of the local PG&E service yard, whatever day it was last, was it Wednesday, I think it was?
Missed it.
It was interesting, I've been there many times, I have not seen it lately and they really have upgraded a lot of things. They've added electric, electric charging stations. They're in the process to really upgrade the whole yard. About 35 workers are assigned that yard and more on occasion, so they have some future plans to really improve the yard. So, it was a good thing to see them doing it and upgrading that. The other item I'm going to add, just as a notice that we received from, sad notice from Orolflex Company down on Southeth Avenue is they're having layoffs and we get the notice of terminations effective December 19th of this year. They'll be losing about 24 staff members. That's not good to hear, but that's a fact. So, if anybody's looking for employees, maybe a good place to go. Anything else? Future agenda items from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Vice Mayor Smith.
Yeah, thank you. By the way, we do have a veterans parade coming up, November 11th. In the past, we've, we own, the city owns some historic vehicles and they're now fallen and disrepaired and are no longer to participate in the parade, which is kind of sad. So, what I'd like to agendacize is kind of the, a discussion as a policy or what, what is our intent with that equipment? Seek restoration, spend some money? And then there are maybe other apparatus as well. There was a fire department, do we have a his, a relic? Yeah, they, and so, what would then be the policy moving forward of the serviceability and use of those, of that equipment in, in things, events or special parades, that kind of thing moving forward? So, I'd like to see that put on the agenda. And then, also in discussion is the museums and obviously, you know, there's a lot of cost with that. It's been expressed to me in the past, other organizations willing to take on our museums, to perhaps enter into an MOU with other organizations to take some of those costs off of the city and so to also look at, at that as well.
Okay. Any other items for future agenda items? Seeing none. Correspondence, of course, I mentioned the Orolflex letter that we received. With that being said, then, I'm going to say the next meeting, we'll adjourn this meeting for the next regular meeting of the Orville City Council will be held November 4th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. We are adjourned, folks, at 6:20. Thank you all.
How awesome. Good meeting, good dialogue.